Kim Johnson is the assistant tonight and Paul Creedon, the building inspector here is also here tonight to answer any questions. The first item on your agenda. Freedom Development Corporation for a special permit on the zoning by law section four two two one and eleven six to demolish an existing dwelling and construct a new two dwelling unit at eight nine five Main Street. Anybody here from the applicant? Laura, I see Laura on.
Is Laura Laura Vio?
Yeah. Laura Laura Vio, are you available?
I just asked her to unmute.
Okay, here I am.
Yeah, you're there, you're there, great.
Okay.
So good, good to see you there. So just to recap, we had a meeting, we discussed this project about a month ago, had a site visit in the snow, looked at, looked at some, some building stakes. And then we continued to tonight. We asked a couple of things during from our last visit. Or from our last meeting, one of them was the removal of some parking spaces which we saw planned that you did that. And then another updated building plan was sent to us today. Can you explain what you changed on that plan, please?
Sure, this is David Vio talking. Per your suggestion, after the walk in that snow.
Yeah.
We met with the neighbors, had a much longer walk through. And after that meeting, they were concerned with the type of trees and shrubs that we'd be planting. But more importantly, they didn't like the way that home looked from their perspective as as in a butter. So we reached out to our architect and kind of just fancied up the back to make it look better. And as of an hour ago and early this morning with discussions from the butters. They're much more comfortable now and are on board with we are intending on doing as long as we, you know, make sure that we provided a good landscape situation once it's complete. So we feel much better today than we did at the at the walkthrough based on the changes that we made. Both landscaping and architectural.
Excellent, thank you. Members of the board members, any any questions or comments?
No, I guess I'm just curious to hear.
Excuse me?
I'm just curious to hear if any of the neighbors are here, I guess.
Yeah, that was that was going to be the next one. Neighbors here.
There was some discussion of moving the house kind of further back in the lot. Or further forward in the lot, actually. Is there any update on that discussion was that closed out from the applicant?
No, that never came up again.
Okay.
We we walked it and and I can say, I mean, I can honestly say that the the neighbors are comfortable now with where it's going to be and what make changes we made and what we're going to do from a landscaping perspective. I suspect they would be on right now if if they were additional issues.
Good. So no comments from the neighbors, no comments from the public, closing that that part. One thing that I I'd asked for and and was providing some stormwater management in in your plans and we're gonna have a condition to that effect, I think, in rather than having you do updated plans right now. Have a condition to that effect in your in the decision, I think. So that if you if before pulling a billing permit, if if you get assuming you get the permit tonight. Then you will get a you will have to discuss with the with the building inspector on how to do what stormwater management practices you are proposing. And that's just all in light that, you know, we've been having enough flooding lately, so anything that any homeowner can do to to help with with that is is much appreciated, so.
No, that's not a problem, we expect that anyway, that's that's what we do.
Good, good.
Theo, I was unclear, I'm sorry, did you open public comment?
Yeah, I open and close.
Okay.
I asked for it and then then I closed it, so. Do we, does the board want to do any further discussion? Do we entertain a motion? Where do we stand on this?
So is the updated landscaping shown on a plan that's been submitted or, you know?
No.
Okay.
We, you know, you don't do that first. Because we didn't know how this meeting was going to come out, but we we ensured the butters that because of the location of the lot being so close to Route Two. That we, you know, for the benefit of the people who are going to be living in their new home. So that they're buffered and have kind of like a little oasis away, so they don't have to look at the other houses. So basically what I said as a builder since nineteen eighty, that we naturally do that for the new homeowners. And they really didn't need to be worried about whether we were going to do it or not, because we need to do that to make it appealing.
Yeah, Ravi, as much as as much as, you know, the the neighbors now want to have privacy, I think the new homeowners want to have privacy as well, so. I think that's going to cut both ways, so I'm not worried there. Anybody care to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make it. Okay. What?
I said, Ravi, you're the next one, by the way.
Yeah, you're the, I know, I was wondering if this was the easier one, so I decided to take it, Robbie. Okay, so I move that we grant a special permit to Freedom Development Corporation under zoning by law section four point two point two point one and eleven point six to demolish the existing dwelling and construct a new two unit dwelling at eight ninety five Main Street parcel number three six eight two subject to standard conditions and also to the condition that a Theo, how do you want to word that? The stormwater.
Prior to issuance of a building permit, stormwater. How did that was written? That the applicant should provide a revised site plan that shows appropriate stormwater drainage measures to accommodate infiltration of stormwater from the roof of the structure and the driveway. And one other thing that was not shown on the drawings and we discussed it actually out on site is that the the tree protection was shown on the on the trees alongside, but not on that cluster of trees that was right in the in the corner. And
Yes.
We would like to have that, that's also going to be, it should also be a condition that that cluster of trees always also will be protected during construction.
Okay.
Uh, that cluster, was there anything else to be protected? I just thought in general.
But I thought that that was it.
All right. Great, well, then I I so move with Theo's additions.
Good.
Second.
All is all is in favor, Elizabeth, there goes more.
Hi.
Raviya.
Hi.
And chair votes I as well. Congratulations and good luck with the construction.
Thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it, thank you very much.
Seven oh five Concord Housing Development Corporation for a special permit and site plan review on the zoning by law section ten eleven six and eleven eight for a five unit planned residential development at four oh six Old Marlboro Road. Anybody here to speak for the applicant? That's just, this is what I was expecting, because they have not had many conversations with the planning board and a planning board has not issued a recommendation to us yet, so. Something tells me that they didn't know that they were on your agenda tonight. Nobody here, anybody, Concord Housing Development Corporation. Nobody, I would entertain a motion to continue the Housing Development Corporation's application for a P U D to a meeting in March, March twenty eighth.
Is seven P M open on that date, do we know?
Say that again, please.
Is seven P M open on the twenty eighth?
Kim, do you know whether that do you have access to the agenda on the twenty eighth? Reason being that I'm trying to punt this too much, because our February meeting is two days after the planning board meeting, so even if they get through the planning board on a Tuesday. You know, I don't think the planner will have a report to us that we can digest by by the eighth. Kim, do you, do we know on whether the March twenty eighth?
Yeah, March twentieth is open, yep.
There's no nobody there yet, so seven o'clock.
Okay.
All right, I move to continue the application of the Concord Housing Development Corporation for the five unit PRD at four oh six Old Marlboro Road to March twenty eighth at seven P M.
Can we hold that thought for a second?
A hand raised.
I see a hand.
Hand raised. Sarah Murphy, please go ahead. You have to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted, before we move on from this, just real quick, we're the we're the butters to this proposed development is is so to understand we want to make sure we understand this correctly, this has just been completely put aside until March, is that correct?
On for for us, yes, they because they still have some work to do with the planning board, so follow the planning. And and there, you know, there are some, I think, were you the person that also sent in a letter?
Yes.
Yeah, and so there hasn't been a response to that. Fire department had some comments, haven't responded to that, so they still have some work to do, some follow up stuff.
Okay.
And then the planning board will will hear it at least once, if not twice. With some modifications and then once, once the planning board votes on it, the planner will write us a recommendation. And then we 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 pick it up from there.
Okay, okay, thank you so much for explaining that, thank you.
Okay, Robbie, you had made the motion to continue to March twenty eighth at seven o'clock, right?
Yes.
To our letter.
Letter, so.
But also Bill.
Oh, sorry, shoot. So sorry. Apologize.
Happy to all of us.
I'll reiterate my motion to continue the March twenty eighth at seven P M.
Second.
Hold us in favor, Ms. Via.
Hi.
Miss Echolsmore.
Hi.
Chair votes I as well, thank you. Seven ten. Timothy Dre for a special permit on the zoning by law section four two 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 six to thirteen and eleven six for a five hundred and thirteen square foot additional dwelling unit above a proposed five hundred and seventy six square foot garage, which altogether exceeds the maximum floor area ratio by seven hundred and fifty three square feet at two fifty two Commonwealth Avenue. So this is a continuation of a meeting we had about a month ago, there were two items that we were struggling with or members of the board were struggling with. One item was really was mine and Ravi, I think you had one of the the other ones, I'll I'll ask you in a second to to talk about that one. My question was the access through the neighbor's property that I still struggle with. More that I personally struggle with, I think, from a from a zoning board perspective, indeed, it is not a question that's being asked to us. Whether you have access rights there or not. So we shouldn't be trying to answer that question. I think what we as zoning board should do is make sure that that it doesn't, you know, if this permit were to be issued, that we don't get ourselves into a bind that, you know, somehow through approval of the permit, we are, you know, concurring that you have rights to go across that property, so I think that's that would be more of a condition if we if we were to approve this. And I think then there was a, so that's that's I I want to leave that part of the discussion there. And and move sort of move on to the to the other part. Where I think Ravi, I think you were wondering whether we could for an A D U exceed exceed the the square footage, right?
Yeah, so I wondered whether it's correct to interpret the bylaw that where the A D U requirements say you cannot exceed the max floor area ratio. You know, I think I'm comfortable now that it's referring to the max far by law section that that allows the board to grant a special permit to exceed the max far, so I I think we could, but I still think we have to consider whether you know, there's no reasonable alternatives available detriment to the neighborhood and whether, you know, this is a case where we would allow the the permit where it goes over the the floor, the max floor area ratio.
Yeah, I I agree with you there, Ravi, I mean, it's it's this is a special permit that in the past have been very reluctant to grant. And and where we always pushed an applicant to really make clear to us that there was no other reasonable alternative and and they've always been very small increases over over the existing square footage and it's always been in an existing structure. And we've never moved a new structure that just goes over the the ratio, so.
So, you know, I think I think the argument that there's no reasonable alternative here is, well, the alternative is you can't have an A D U in a separate building, right? You'd have to take space from your existing structures to create the A D U if that's if you wanted to have an A D U on the property.
Or don't have a garage, right? Because it
Yeah. It's like it's either having the garage or having the A D U puts you over that extra amount that's, you know, quite a bit over here.
Yep.
So, you know, I I I struggle with, let's say we were to say, okay, fine, granted here. Well, how do we say no to anybody that says, hey, you know, I'm close to the max floor area ratio for my lot? But I want to add an A D U, let me just build one and then you know, there's no, the alternative would be not having an A D U, so I should not have to comply with the max floor area ratio. And I should just be able to put another structure on my property that's, you know, several hundred square feet over. Right, so that that's that's my struggle here.
And then I I hear you. Elizabeth, Elizabeth, any any opinions here?
That's other Elizabeth, you got anything?
I agree with what Ravi said, I think it's important to pay attention to the details.
Yeah, I also agree, I guess, seeing as the burden would be on the applicant, I guess I'd like to hear some arguments on on why why we're wrong or why why it should be granted.
Yeah, Mr. Silverstein, which you were
Oh, this is Tim Dre. I could, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, yeah, so I'm the applicant. The the motivation behind this was we really wanted a two car garage. And as you stated, that would just put us over. And I guess I had interpreted that the the desire to have more housing with, you know, being able to have an A D U just just above it. Just use, I know, it adds five hundred and some square feet, but just to make it a little higher. Not really too much increasing the footprint. But I I my hope was that those were encouraged and and I I guess I didn't realize that you know, the floor ratio going over this much is is a concern. And I, you know, certainly could consider downsizing it like you stated, the one or the other. But the hope was to partly to help, you know, fund everything was to to have an A D U and to have more housing, but I I understand some of your comments.
Yeah, thank you, and it's something.
Oh, sorry, thanks, Mr. Chair, I was just going to add to what Tim said. You know, I I don't want to presume to put myself in the chair of all the people at town meeting who voted for the F A R by law. But I know from almost thirty years representing cities and towns that generally F A R bylaws are intended as a tool to prevent mansionization. Or, you know, as a way to get at mansionization, particularly in towns like Concord where property values are going up so much. And it's it's hard to find smaller housing units. And the zoning act doesn't allow zoning bylaws to regulate floor area per se to regulate single the size of single family homes, so the way to get at it is through F A R bylaws. And I know anecdotally from people who were involved in supporting the F A R by law that that was consistent with a lot of other communities, the true intent of it. So to the point of, well, if we allow it here, why wouldn't we allow it somewhere else? Let me try to address that concern, it's illegitimate. Obviously, you know, I know I'm speaking to a board full of lawyers, so. But the there's no precedential effect. Courts up through the US Supreme Court have said that every land by their nature, land use on permit applications are very fact specific and don't create any sort of precedential effect. But that being said, this is not a situation where someone has a five thousand square foot house on a one acre lot and decides they really need to have that, you know, extra media room. And so we want to put another thousand square feet on. So you know, the question of derogating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. I think this is not a mansion, you know, a McMansion house. Tim's house is by Concord standards, pretty modest. And you know, I I guess you could say, well, you know, he wants to have his cake and eat it too, he wants a garage and an A D U. I don't think in this day and age, particularly after the past couple of days, it's unreasonable for a family to want to have a garage for their cars. And then we get to, well, why an A D U? And I think Tim said it, wow, this is really an ideal location for an A D U and and housing is is, I'm not going to beat the horse of, you know, the need for housing, particularly in communities like Concord and where I live in Lexington, it's an extreme housing shortage and having a modest rental unit like this a very short walking distance from mass transit, from, I mean, this is the the definition of smart growth. So I certainly, look, you have a lot of discretion and and if you just don't like the idea of of this, then it it wouldn't be arbitrary and capricious to deny it. But if the question is, could you reasonably find that this application meets the standard, I would submit you clearly can. There isn't an alternative. If he wants, you know, if Tim and his wife want to have a garage and want to supply a modest dwelling unit. The alternate, you know, it's traditional alternatives analysis is, could you do it somewhere else? Could you do on the lot? Could you do it smaller? Could you do it in the house? This isn't a giant house with an au pair suite that can be converted to an A D U. And so I would say that there isn't an alternative, the alternative is you just don't do it, and that's not really the the meaning of an alternatives analysis. And then you get into detriment to the neighborhood. You haven't had anyone in the neighborhood speak against this other than you know, and I don't want to get into the access thing, I feel confident on the access thing, but apart from saying in in that neighbor didn't even say, don't let them do it. That neighbor just said you know, have them access the other way. So no one has come in and said this is too big, which is really what it comes down to when you're looking at a F A R application, so I'll stop there. I really appreciate the board's time and consideration, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Elizabeth. You see something, you look like
Yeah, yeah, no, I find that argument really compelling. I mean, I think this is clearly not what the F A R, you know, bylaws meant to do. So I guess the question is, do we feel comfortable kind of making that policy decision that that we're going to say that we are interpreting it how we want to interpret it? I'm comfortable doing it, I think it's a, and I don't think we're doing an alternatives analysis that we would do if we were doing a variance, right? I mean, so it's, it is different.
Yeah, I I just want to kind of have that roadmap to how we got there, right? So and and I think I think the key points were right, there's nowhere else to put it, you can't put it in the house, there isn't space, it's a modest house. You know, we've got a garage, the building is going to be there anyway, if we deny the A D U, right? There's going to be a garage there anyway. Why not make use of the space on top of it for a purpose that the town clearly voted they wanted to support with the A D U by law? So, you know, I I think that's kind of where I see the roadmap to getting comfortable here and maybe where we would have some discretion to say other situations, don't fall into this kind of specific bucket. But yeah, I I appreciate the additional kind of facts from the applicant on that, because that that's helpful to get us there. So I, you know, I I think that, Theo, your access issue is still there. I don't know if anybody else did show up at this meeting to talk to say anything about this from the public, but other than that. You know, I think I'm convinced.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, yeah, that that access issue is still there, and I think, indeed. That's something that I just personally don't don't feel comfortable with. But it's not, that wasn't the question that was being asked to us, right? So we shouldn't answer the the question of the access. But but I I agree with you that there are, it's like, you know, if the applicant can build a garage, then we might as well put an A D U on top of it. Right, I mean, because that's that is something that the town wants. And and I think I think that's that's the argument, I I'm struggling with the fact that we're going over the F A R. Now, it is a smallish lot to begin with, so you know, whatever you do, you get over the F A R pretty now, it is a smallish lot to begin with, so you know, whatever you do, you get over the FAR pretty quickly, um, but we're going over with, you know, almost 750 square feet, so, it is not insubstantial.
No, but I mean, it, it is, are, we're not doing a strict numbers cutoff, that's not, you know, is it substantial within what you just said, within the lot, within how it's being used? I think there's an argument that it's qualitative and not quantitative, and by square footage. Basically, I was very convinced by Mr. Silverstein's, uh.
Yeah, I mean, the, the house isn't getting bigger, right, nobody's trying to make a a big house here, um, the, the two-car garage seems sized pretty modestly, I don't know how you make it any smaller and still fit two cars in it, um, so, you know, right, it's, it's not always about the, the numbers, it's about the numbers in relation to the situation we have, so, um, yeah, but yeah, I say, I think, you know, that's, that 750-square-foot number gives me pause, but I think that's, that's kind of how we get.
And you know, this is a new issue, relatively new issue for our board as well, so, going with, with it this way and not saying, alright, well, we're just looking at that's a big number, I think is probably helpful going forward, even though that's.
And, and, and reducing the size of the ADU square footage doesn't make sense here, right, like, it doesn't accomplish anything, so, yeah, we could cut the square footage down, but it, it kind of defeats the, the purpose.
Right. I'm comfortable with it, in terms of the access, again, what you said, Theo, I don't wanna get us, ourselves on the hook for having granted some rights that we weren't allowed to, I don't know if you wanna put a condition in, I don't know what we're thinking about.
Yeah, um, yeah, but, and I'm, I actually, I'm just looking at the, uh, the meeting documents, um,
Did the applicant have a, I feel like the question of the orientation may have been raised, but I can't recall if we heard from the applicant their thoughts on having the access from the the private way versus the, the driveway on the side.
I, I can speak to that again, I don't know. So I guess, just as I, before I do that, I mean, if it's helpful, I know, whatever.
Some, something happened to your, something happened to the volume here of your, your all of a sudden are.
Um, is that any better?
It's somewhat better, it's now workable.
Sorry, I'll just speak up.
Yeah.
Um, so when I, when I've been helping boards and this sort of property rights issue has come up, I've always just suggested a finding in the decision that makes very clear that the board is not making any determination about any property rights, including the right of access over the private way, so, to the extent that's helpful, if you'd prefer it as a condition, we're obviously fine with that as well, uh, we, we're very confident we have those rights, um, but I certainly understand the board not wanting, you know, to suggest that for any decision to be used as a suggestion, and, well, see, the ZBA clearly thinks we have the right, so, which it couldn't be, no judge would ever be convinced by that, but I certainly appreciate that, uh, as to the orientation, um, so there, there are a few different issues, one is that Concord Foreign Motors uses that private driveway um, quite a bit, uh, and it's frankly not as safe or convenient a means of accessing the property. The other thing is, um, we would have to remove a number of plantings and green space and pave it over in order to create a new driveway onto this private way, instead of using the driveway that has always been used to access this property off of the access directly to Commonwealth, um, you know, tho- those are the reasons, you know, it just seems, um, that it, it wouldn't make sense to eliminate green space, add impervious area, and use a less convenient and less safe, um, means of access, when the current means of access that's been in place for, since this house was first built, has never posed any problem whatsoever, and I would know, I know one issue came up, well, maybe the owner of the abutting property could fence that off and, you know, decide to put the driveway on the other side, I don't think that would ever happen, even if he could, but he can't, because Concord Foreign Motors actually has an express easement to use that driveway, so, they would never have the right to do that, so that driveway is gonna be there, and it's, you know, if we're being honest, it's gonna continue to be used to access the Dre's home, um, absent some sort of, you know, land court action and judgment against us, which would never happen, so, you know, I, I'll stop there, uh, it, it just doesn't seem like it would make any sense for a whole number of reasons.
Right, uh, thank, thank you, I was just reading also some of the, uh, some documentation, um, there was one letter, um, I mean, in this one letter of, of Butter, somebody on Wintrop Street who, who was in favor of, uh, of issuing this permit, and then Concord, uh, Commonwealth Motors, uh, or Concord Foreign Motors sent, also sent a letter, um, wanting to keep that, that, that easement open, um, do we have any more discussion? That's while we're actually, to be totally formal here, um, any member of the public that wishes to comment here? Uh, nobody, so closing public comment section, um, members of the board, what's your fancy? I think the ball is on Ravi's court, right, Elizabeth?
Yeah, Ravi, on your court, it's, to me, it's just what you want to do with the access issue and how.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I heard, uh, Mr. Silverstein say that he'd be comfortable with the condition, um, I mean, I, I, what were you envisioning that condition would say, that you have established access rights through that driveway, or?
I, I would never ask for that, um, but what I heard was the board's concern that it didn't want the issuance of a special permit to somehow carry the informator of endorsing our access rights, so, uh, that's why it didn't really seem like a condition, or it seemed like a finding that we are, you know, by issuing this special permit, the board is not, um, you know, making any, or passing judgment on any private property rights, one way or another, in terms of the right to use the access from Commonwealth, um, if you'd rather put that same type of language in, in a condition, um, it, it doesn't really seem like a condition, because it's not making us do anything, but it's obviously whatever the board's more comfortable with.
All right, and, you, have you talked to the neighbor about maybe formalizing something, or has that conversation not happened?
There, there have been some conversations, but, um, the neighbor doesn't live there, I don't know, is that property even occupied, Tim? I don't think it is at this point, um.
Correct, yeah, no, it, it's been vacant in the two-plus years I've been here, I mean, his, the neighbor's proposal, which I believe he stated in the letter, was really to do the opposite of what Concord Foreign Motors wants, which was to, to, you know, redirect and, you know, what you were describing of taking down trees and trying to reroute our driveway, so, that wasn't what we're, we're hoping for.
So it doesn't seem the neighbor's ready to engage on formalizing anything? And you said there is a recorded easement for Concord Foreign Motors?
From the prior owner of the abutting property, for $1.
Yeah.
Which clearly formalized what everyone knew, which is that everyone, you know, this has been used for many decades, I don't know if it's helpful, if the board wants to see it, I'd be happy to screen share and provide a copy of an affidavit we have from the private, prior property owner of Tim's property since the 60s, which states clearly that they've always, you know, for, you know, sixty, six decades, they used this driveway without any, you know, permission from the abutting property owner and under a claim of right, I mean, I don't think there's any question about the prescriptive rights to use this driveway, uh, if, if that's something that would be helpful for the board to see, I'm certainly happy to do that and provide a copy.
I guess I'm not overly worried about seeing it, I think, getting down to what we're worried about is how we, or the town, or is gonna, if there's an issue, is gonna get dragged into it, um, and I guess what I'm feeling is that how would that work practically? I'm having a hard time seeing how, especially if there's a finding that says we're specifically talking about this, and this is what we're saying, I, I, I think it's gonna be their problem, to be honest. I hope it's not your problem, but if it is a problem, I, I don't really think it's supposed to be.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, and, you know, I, I, I get what you're saying, that it doesn't feel like a condition, but I'm, I almost feel better that we are conditioning our grant of the permit on the understanding that the board is making no, you know.
So what, what's the condition, though? It's like, they conditioned on the.
But it's not a condition that they have to do something, it's a condition that everybody agrees, the under, everybody agrees that the board, zoning board of appeals, uh, is passing no, or, you know, giving no, um,
Yeah, which again, I understand why it's more of a finding than a condition.
Right.
Sign an affidavit that says that you have rights, or you must report an easement, then we're in a condition, but.
Right.
I don't know how necess, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I mean, but without that finding, we wouldn't be giving the permit, right, so it's, you know, that's how I feel like it's a condition, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, I don't really care, to be honest, and I don't think, speaking for you.
Yeah, it's, it's.
If it really cares, fine, make it a condition, and I don't, I don't think it is a condition, because not having anything done.
There's no action from the applicant.
Yeah.
Uh, like, before we grant this permit, we, you have to have said that you think that you have the right to this, like, okay, but if you wanna make it a condition, fine, I don't know how you word it, but.
Yeah.
I typed something out, I don't know if it would be helpful, if you want me to read it?
Sure, yeah, well, sorry, sorry, I'm not the chair, Theo.
Yeah, sorry.
No, 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 I.
That's the chair.
Legal matters, I, I gladly yield.
Um, in granting this special permit, uh, the board does not intend, and the special permit shall not be construed as a determination by the board regarding what rights, if any, the applicant has in the driveway serving as access to the property.
That sounds good to me.
What do you think, Ravi?
Yeah.
Walk it through from the other side, how are you gonna get us on that? There's a little.
You're not, it's just gonna be, you know, we're named, and then we just say, we, we have nothing to do with this, and then they say, okay, yeah, you, you're dismissed.
We pay town council some money, we're all.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm okay with that, I, I think it accomplishes what you want to accomplish, but hey, oh, you're okay with it, but, I don't.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine.
All right, so, I guess we're there?
I think we're there.
Okay. Uh, all right, I move that, uh, we approve the application of Timothy Dre for a special permit under zoning bylaw sections 422, 26013, and 116 for a 513-square-foot ADU above or proposed 576-square-foot garage, which altogether sees the maximum floor area ratio by 753 square feet at 252 Commonwealth have, uh, with the findings discussed, uh, that the board, um, does not intend to, and shall not be construed as, uh, making any determination or granting any informator to, uh, the applicant's access rights over the existing driveway, uh, and the findings as discussed, uh, that there were no reasonable alternatives, uh, and no substantial detriment to the neighborhood, and that uh, this relief from the max FAR can be granted without, uh, derogating from the intent purpose of the bylaw, um, I guess that's it.
Thanks, I said, all right, I.
Yeah, and then, and I'm, I'm actually broken record here, I'm gonna also add the same condition about stormwater management as, uh, is in, in, uh, as was in the first, uh, deci- decision, you know, we'll, we'll hear that, that condition more tonight, um, so.
So Ravi, you add that condition?
So moved. Yeah.
Second.
Um, so, all those in favor, Ms. Fia?
Hi.
Ms. Akos Moore?
Hi.
And Chair votes aye as well, congratulations.
Thank you so much, really appreciate all your time and consideration.
It was actually an interesting conversation.
Yeah, this was actually.
I always think land use law is interesting, but not everyone agrees.
I know, I think everyone thinks so.
Have a great night, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 7, 715 Middlesex School for the renewal of a special permit on the zoning bylaw section 545 and 116 for the temporary use of event and service tents at 1400 Lowell Road, anybody here to speak?
Uh, yes, Judy Omobono.
Hi, uh, welcome, um, go ahead, do you have a presentation, do you wanna say something, um?
Um, well, I'm not particularly well-practiced at this, um, I get to do this every five years, and, um, the, the, the materials don't change much, basically, we are applying for a renewal of an existing permit for a variance on, if I have this right, um, for tents on the school property.
Good, thank you, and you, you just mentioned that, uh, it doesn't change much, uh, your application in five years, have the tents changed, ha, does your, uh, does your attendance change, has it over the years, hasn't grown?
I mean, the attendance does fluctuate, um, the, the examples that I've, I've submitted are for the biggest events that we have here on campus, so that I would make sure I was, you know, uh, putting forth whatever the biggest concern could be, but for, we have our family weekend in the fall, and then alumni weekend in the spring, and yes, attendance will vary, um, we always, again, the plans I've submitted are for, you know, high volume, and so, if we're having a smaller event, then I will have a smaller tent, sometimes we have, um, additional or smaller accessory tents, like a catering tent, or a uh, facilities tent, or something like that. But again.
Sorry, my question was more like, you know, you, you submitted these materials five years ago, were, are these like the same materials, or over the last five years, has this event grown in size, or?
Um, the only thing that has grown a little bit was probably family weekend, and that's just because the student population had grown, um, so we went from about 380, 375 to about 410 students, so, just as a factor of 30 additional students, we could potentially get 60 additional parents, it doesn't always work with that straight math, but again, it's, it feels like it's small, we haven't needed any additional tents, the tent that we use for family weekend, in fact, doesn't, doesn't change with attendance size, all of the, um, all of the parents and families are housed within, uh, our structures on campus.
Thank, thank you, um, members of the.
All right, I, I don't think we saw the old permit in the materials on the website, I, I just don't know if, was there like a max attendance number in the conditions there, or?
No, not to my knowledge.
Okay, so we don't, you're not looking for any change to the conditions in the existing?
No.
Okay.
Um, Elizabeth, Elizabeth, questions?
Just as long as there's been no issues.
Uh, yeah, Paul, um, you know whether there were any issues over the last five years?
No, we, we haven't had any, yeah, I haven't heard any, not, not since I've been in town.
All right, thank, thanks, Paul, um, uh, open it up for, uh, to members of the public, uh, any members of the public that wanna speak? Seeing. Seeing. Seeing none, closing the public comment section. I, uh, I feel, uh, obviously, it's a, it's, it's been five years that, uh. The Middlesex School has had this permit five years of no issues. So I feel comfortable to, uh, to extend this permit for another five years. Um, so I don't know whether, what the board feels, and whether the board wants to make a motion.
I would love to make a motion. I'm hoping that we renew, uh, the special permit, um. The Middlesex School special permit under zoning by law section five, four, five, eleven point six. For the temporary use of event and service tents at fourteen hundred Lowell Road, parcel number one five three three, um. Subject to the same conditions as the prior, um, permit and for five, an additional five years.
Nice second.
Everyone in favor, Ms. Akos Moore?
Hi.
Ms. Sophia?
Hi.
And Chair votes I as well. Congratulations.
Excellent. Thank you so much. On behalf of the school, appreciate it.
See you in five years. Different faces and dissent, I guess. All the five years, uh. Robbie, you might still be here, and, um, Elizabeth.
Maybe I'll be back. You never know.
Great, great. It's, uh, it's seven twenty already, so let's do, uh, Megan Lynch for a special permit on the zoning bylaws. Section one, five, and eleven, six to construct a nine hundred sixty-five square foot addition. Eleven thirty-six square foot. Uh, on a non-conforming single-family dwelling that increases the gross floor area by more than fifty percent. At seventy-six Bolton Street is, uh, Ms. Lynch available here to speak?
Hi, I'm here. I'm Lori Crockett. I'm working with Megan Lynch on this.
Excellent, excellent. Welcome, um, go ahead.
Um, I'm just gonna read something briefly, and then we can talk. Um, I'm Lori Crockett. I'm an architect working with Megan Lynch, the homeowner of seventy-six Bolton. We're requesting relief from the reference sections of the zoning bylaw that are listed on the application. The property is zone resident, District A. The lot does not conform to the front setback or the required size. We are proposing an addition that exceeds the square footage allowed on a non-conforming structure by thirty-five percent. We are well below the F A R requirements. We're about half of what the F A R would allow. The house is a bungalow style built in thirty-seven. It is a small house, as many in this neighborhood are. Very few of the lots meet the zoning requirements of Residence A. The family purchased the property about two and a half years ago, and they would like to enlarge the house to make it more comfortable. While maintaining the exterior character. The addition is a one-story family room off the left side of the house, the enlargement of one of the two bedrooms, and adding a bathroom. A carport has been added to the right side of the house. The owner is working with a landscaped designer to help maintain the natural feeling of the property. She's very sensitive to the appearance of the house, and we think that the addition will keep the scale and the size. Of those of the houses in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any, uh. Board members, any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Uh, it looks like this house just went on the market.
It did go on the market.
Alright, so I mean, that raises, I guess, some issue of, uh, transferring. A special permit, and also, we could talk about that in a second, but also, I know a lot of the neighbor, the abutters were. Happy to have neighbors, and you're talking about. What the, you know, what the current owner is gonna do, but I think it changes the equation a little bit.
Um, they're just, go ahead. Megan's here, the owner.
Hi, this is Megan Lynch, and yes, we, uh, I did list the property, and that is been a combination of. Construction costs and getting bids in and the amount I would need to finance. This is kind of butting up against. What the house would ultimately appraise at, and I have to make the best financial decision for me and my family. It doesn't mean I don't wanna do this renovation, but I have to just. Have my due diligence in terms of what that meant, and. Because of the way the current market is, was recommended to get it on. While there's not that many single-family homes in Concord under. One point four million dollars, so. So that's the reasoning behind it. That was a very difficult decision that I don't take lightly. I bought this house. Um, after divorce for me and my kids, and it's been a place of healing and love, and. Oh, I've worked with Lori before, and. So it was a very difficult decision, but I. I think it's just one I had to do at the time.
Yeah, no, I know, and it's a personal decision. I'm just wondering how it affects the special permit, if it's, just in general, I just wanna have that in front of us to kind of.
Yeah, and I, yeah.
You're not sure you're gonna sell it.
Yeah, it's a matter of trying to figure out like what. The market is doing right now and. What I could do with the renovation and hoping to have all of the options available to me and my family.
Right. No, I'm just thinking if you sell it and there's a special permit is approved, and I guess then the, the special permit would not. Go with the land, right? So we're just to point that out. Like, if you wanted to permit it and then sell it. They would have to come back before us. Am I correct? Am I incorrect? Am I?
I, I don't, we, we personally.
Not asking you guys, I'm asking the board.
I don't, well, I mean, I guess we could condition it that way in theory, right?
Well, wouldn't you have to reapply anyway if it's not built yet? I don't know.
What if construction commences? I don't know, it's like.
Right? I, it's an issue.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're, right. Anyway.
I mean, I have no problems. That's a contingency that if it sells someone and someone else is interested in. You know, I don't know if whoever would potentially be a buyer would be interested, and that's up to them to take.
You're not marketing it as it has this.
No.
Ready to go for a, for a bigger house. Okay. That's good to know.
Um, Robbie, other Elizabeth questions?
Just curious, the. It looks like you're adding dormers, but is the height of the roof? The existing roof changing?
Yes, the height of the existing roof is changing to give more access to the attic. So you can use some of it. It's pretty low right now. It's a pretty small little house. It's very cute, and we're trying to maintain the character, but yes. The roof will go up some.
That was my only question.
Good. Let's, uh, open it up for, uh, public comment here. Uh, Mr. Clarkson, you have your hand up.
Uh, yeah, I'm, uh, live across the street. I, I'm, was just caught off guard by seeing it. Listed for sale less than twenty-four hours ago, so. Um, yeah, I would prefer the future dwellers to be the ones to decide if they wanna. Uh, change the house. Uh, the, the landscape has changed a lot. Uh, there's been improvements, obviously, but the privacy. Has been a thing for us that's changed a lot with the removal of a lot of the trees. So adding an, another layer and windows that, um. Uh, it would, it would take away a lot of that, cuz our houses are pretty close to the street. Um, but I'm more concerned about, you know, listing it. Less than twenty-four hours ago, and then like, uh, approving this. Uh, for us, yes, I. For, I, I would rather the future owners be the ones who decide whether or not they wanna change the house. Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thanks. Um, yeah, and as far as public comment goes, uh, there were, I believe, three letters of support. Pretty strong support, actually, uh. For, for the applicant and the application, so just wanted to make sure that that's in the record as well.
Can I make a comment, please?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Um, when we filed for the special permit. The cost of the addition in, in the whole situation wasn't, you know, known. So this special permit. Application is for Megan Lynch, and she doesn't have any. And besides the fact that I've done a design that is specific to her, and someone else might not like it, you know, so it's. You know, it's really, the approval of this would be for Megan, and Megan may keep the home. She's not sure yet. So that's why we proceeded with the special permit. Just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, yeah, thank, thank you for that, yeah, and then. I can see that. I mean, it was, uh, as you said, it's a cute home, uh, the addition and all is very tastefully done. And, you know, I. I mean, it, it took me by surprise yet to, to hear that it got, uh, put on the market. Because I thought it looked pretty, pretty nice, and, and indeed, it's, it's a tailored. It's a tailored renovation, tailored to one person, so, um, so I, I'm fine with it, the need if, if we can condition. And maybe it is anyways, the law, but it's actually, it's a good one to, to find out. Uh, for us anyways, uh, but in this case, we can condition that, that, you know, that the special permit would be null and void. If the house, uh, gets sold. So, um.
Well, I, I, I think it has to be a little more specific, right? It's like if the house gets sold before. It's built, cuz once it's built, it's not like you can.
If the house gets. Yeah, uh.
So it gets, it gets a little.
Before billing permit, you know, before billing permit get issued. It's issued, right?
Yeah, you're right, Robbie.
So, I don't know, Paul, do you have any thoughts on how that would work if, like, they start? And then. They sell in the middle of it?
Um, I, I, I assume the new owner would, 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 would take control of the, of the, of the building permit then. That's, that's not unusual. Happened a few times, actually, where a house would get sold in the middle of a renovation. So then, I would just take, take, take charge, take control of the permit, take ownership of the permit.
Right.
Uh, well, you know, there, there is no requirement, there's no requirement to build this. It shouldn't be either by, uh, Ms. Lynch or the new owner, so.
Yeah, but, but I think once construction commences, it's.
Yeah.
I don't think we can, like, nullify the permit after the construction commences. I just.
Uh, that, that, that wouldn't be.
Yeah.
So.
Right, if it sells before construction commences, then you need to come and get a new permit.
Yeah, I, you could, you could condition that, I guess, yeah.
Listen, my reaction is just to a lot of those letters having a personal connection to, to the owner, and then. I, I understand the explanation, but then have it be like, well, you know, are you getting the permit to sell it for, because it's worth more money with the permit? You know, I, which doesn't sound like what you were trying to do, but it. It just puts a little bit of different color on, on the support.
Uh, you know, there, there's an HGTV show, right? Love it or listed, and. What you're, you gotta make that. You know, it, it all goes on at the same time, right? You can't like wait. For one or the other, cuz then you lose both, so I understand that you gotta.
The letters of support, which, you know, I'm relying, you know.
Yeah, yeah, but at the end of the day, like, we're not approving the quality of the person who's making the application, right? I think fits with the neighborhood, meets the special permit criteria. Um, and.
It does, but it's still, it's still lends a different air to it when you're reading those.
It does, it does, yeah.
But I, I, I see your point. I think you're right with, once construction starts, and. I mean, I think that's, makes our point.
Yeah.
And I also think if someone, um, I, excuse me, I also think if someone. Bought it during construction, they would buy it knowing what it was gonna be, you know, kinda like, cuz it was already permitted, and. They would either say, yeah, we like this, or we don't. I mean, this was, you know, new to me too, so. But we'd have planned for the meeting and planned for this special permit, and, you know. Megan would like to go through with it, cuz she may keep the house. She's looking at all of her options, so.
Yeah, I don't think it, we're, we're saying we have an objection to that. It's just, uh. Yeah. What we condition it on.
Yep.
There's gonna be some, um, water management, Theo, that you put in here.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's just gonna be standard edition, so. Talking about conditions. It's Robbie this time, yeah, right?
Uh, sure, um, so. Uh, I make a motion to approve the application of Megan Lynch for a special permit under zoning by law section seven, one, five, eleven, six. To construct a nine hundred sixty-five square foot addition. An eleven hundred thirty-six square foot, non-conforming single-family dwelling that increases the gross floor area by more than fifty percent. At seventy-six Bolton Street. Uh, with the condition that if the house is sold before construction has commenced. The special permit would lapse, assuming that. Is a legal condition for us to put in there, uh, and, uh, with those, um. Stormwater condition, which I think. For some mitigation of the additional. Uh, impervious area, uh, through infiltration or some other mechanism, uh, to deal with stormwater.
Sounds good. I second.
Um, all those in favor, Ms. Sophia?
Hi.
Ms. Akos Moore?
Hi.
Chair votes I as well. Thank you, and, um, good luck with your decision. Seems like a tough one, but good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing in a reality show, Robbie.
You're welcome.
Very academic discussion.
Okay, it being seven twenty-five, or just shortly thereafter. Uh, Sepidi Hashimi. My apologies if I butchered that name. For a special permit on the zoning by law section seven, one, five, and eleven, six to construct a nine hundred forty-eight. And a half square foot addition. On a, one thousand seven hundred sixty-two point six square foot non-conforming single-family dwelling. That increases the gross floor area by more than fifty percent at forty Woodland Road. Anybody to represent? Uh, the applicant.
Um, I'm here, Leslie Mahoney. I'm the architect.
Hi, Leslie. Is the house for sale yet, or?
The house is not for sale.
How did you know that, that that house was listed for sale?
You have to do your research, you know. Come prepare.
That's good, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Sorry, go ahead.
Um, so do we wanna look at the drawings?
Um, sure, or, uh, you can, um. Kim, you can pull them up, or you could, uh, potentially, the applicant can pull them up if, uh, they get, uh. Permission. Right, Kim, can you, can you provide that?
There was a new, um. Site plan uploaded, so I don't know if the board has seen the new site plan.
Yeah, it came in, uh, this afternoon.
Okay, great.
And Lee, I was gonna ask you, one of the things is what, what's changed?
Um, I can explain that. Let me see if I can share.
You can share, that will be good. Excellent.
Okay, great. So, um. We had to redo the site plan in order to have the proposed done. The existing or the previous surveyor is no longer available. And this, um, dimension here was changed by the new surveyor. So previously, I think we had. To the side. Lot line, we had about twelve feet, but now we only have eleven point three. Um, so when you look at the proposed. This new sunroom in the rear. Um, was not previously across the setback, but now it is across the setback. And it is still not as non-conforming as the current. House is, so I just wanted to point that out. So we're planning to add this sunroom. Um. Which is, you know, to the building fourteen point one feet. So almost within the setback. We're extending the garage. Um, forward. But again, it is not as non-conforming as the existing house. It's coming forward five and a half feet. So that we can actually get a car in there. Um, and it provides enough room to build over top a second. Um, well, another bedroom. Um. Back here, we are also building, but on the existing footprint. There's a current greenhouse here that is coming down, and we're building a kitchen. With a full basement foundation underneath it. With a full basement foundation underneath it, so that, um, Seppi can have, um. Real utilities that actually function in a, uh, an energy efficient way. And then we're also adding, um, this front foyer, proposing to add the foyer here. And it comes in front of the house, um, by six feet. And that's really because the, I'll move to another drawing here, um. The existing, um, entry. Has no roof over it, it's really tight to the stair on the interior. Um, it just doesn't function well as a front entry at all, there's no space to come in, the stair comes right down, it's kind of dangerous, you fly down that stair into the front door. Um, and so she would really like to have some type of covered extended entry here. And then this shows the extended garage with a mudroom side entrance and the new bedroom above from the front. So it puts us over the, um, allotted. Um. Amount by three percent.
Okay, so, uh, so fifty three percent, uh, is. What this, this additional square footage is.
Exactly, right.
Um, and how, what's the FAR on the site, the, uh, do you know, and how much under are you?
Um. The FAR, it should be on my application, right? The proposed. Well, it has the. It says the FAR allowed is thirty six eighty eight. Is that what you're looking for?
Uh, yeah, thirty. Okay, are you that, that close to the, uh?
No, we only have twenty seven, the, the proposed gross square footage is twenty seven eleven.
Okay, okay, well, so you, you're still. Almost a thousand square foot under.
Yes. It's the percentage issue.
Yep.
Because the lot is so small.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
Good, um. Any questions from the board? Nobody, nobody, um, I don't have any questions either. Um. Any public, is anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this application?
I know Seppi had a letter from a neighbor, I don't, it came in, you know, after the application was submitted.
Um.
I don't have a letter that I've received, unless someone else has received the letter.
Yeah.
You received an email from somebody, didn't you, Seppi, from one of your neighbors?
I, I received people wishing me. Um, good wishes and saying that they're happy that we would have actually a functional house to live in. Because they're familiar with how tight this space is and we've made it work for the. Six years, it's very difficult, the, the bedroom I, I'm in is extremely small, I don't know if you can tell where I stand is. Is where my, where I conduct my work and I'm inside one of those dormers, and that's, it's a small space. And we're a single family, single parent, adult child with some needs. So, um, the space is not only needed for me, but for a time when I'm not here, and she might need. People to live here and take care of her. So you might consider this part of my estate planning. Unfortunately, she's not in any place where she would be moving out and going out into the world, we are here.
Thank, uh, thank you, um. Not seeing any, uh, public, uh, anybody from public raising their hands on closing the public comment section of this hearing. Um. Personally, I think, I think these, uh, these additions, um. And, and actually, these, these modifications to the, to the house are, uh, sort of surgical, surgical almost, and, and, and very well thought through. On, on making this house more livable, livable. And architecturally, I think, you know, as, as you can see, I think on these, uh, these, these elevations that, um. The addition will very well blend with the, uh, with the existing house, so. Um, I don't know.
So, so my only, my only. Sort of concern was with that front portico. Because it is coming further into the setbacks than the existing house. But it's. You know, I gue- I, I guess it's. It's small enough, it's well designed enough that I. I, I'm okay with it, I just wanted to see if any of the other board members had. Thoughts on that, where, you know, it's like, are you extending, are you increasing the non-conformity? Well, here we kind of are. Um. But, you know, they could, I think they could build, I think they could build an entryway that wasn't enclosed and you have the same thing there, right? Um, and it wouldn't count as. In the setback, I'm not sure about that. So, so, so I guess, maybe, Paul, do you know if, if they didn't enclose that foyer and they just. Put some columns and a roof over the entryway, so you could stay dry while you were coming in the front door? Would that be allowed in the setback, because it's not enclosed living space, or would it still?
No, it's still the structure, probably, it's, it's, yeah, that would be same, same thing.
Can we, can we see the site plan again, by the way?
Mm-hmm. Oh, this one.
No, that one, so that's, that's. Yeah. You know, I, I agree with, uh, with you, Robbie, that, that, that obviously, uh, increases the non-com, non-conformity, um. That being said, I think, you know, it architecturally, it works well, um. And, and, you know, I think you could make, make a case that it does make the house blend in with the neighborhood better, because it's, it's, you know, architecturally a better. A better plan, a, a better facade.
Right. And it's, you know, I, I, I don't think it's any more detrimental. Than what's in the setback already, to have that there, so. Like I said, I, I, I'm okay with it, I just wanted to kind of point that out.
Yep. Elizabeth?
I'm okay with it. And I'm okay with Robbie making this motion if he wants.
Okay.
Throwing it out there.
Uh, sorry, I just had a technical glitch, um, I'm back, uh, yes, I can make a motion. I have to get back to the agenda, sorry, I clicked off it, uh. I move that, the application of Sepi Hashimi for a special permit under zoning by law section seven one five eleven six to construct a nine hundred and forty eight and a half square foot addition on a. Seventeen hundred and sixty two point six square foot non-conforming single family dwelling that increases the gross, gross floor area by more than fifty percent at Forty Woodland Road, um. Be approved, Theo, do you want your? Stormwater condition in there, for this one, or it's?
No, this is, this is, this is.
The minimum kind of additional footprint, right, you know?
It's, this one is small enough, and plus, I think one, one addition is on a deck anyways, and so.
Yeah, okay, makes sense, um, so, uh, just standard conditions then.
Second.
Um, all those in favor, Ms. Fia?
Aye.
Is there any cause more?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well, congratulations and good luck with the renovations.
Great, thank you very much.
It's gonna be a nice house.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, thank, um. Seven thirty, Mark and Jody Lofman for a special permit on the zoning by law section seven one five and eleven six to construct a two hundred and sixty six square foot addition. With a, within a front yard setback on a non-conforming carriage house, garage and a four hundred six hun-. Four hundred and sixty four square foot addition on a non-conforming single family dwelling at, uh, one, two, three, four Monument Street. Anybody here from the applicant who wishes to present?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, here for the applicant, Mark and Jody Lofman. Uh, good evening, everyone, Mike Tartamello with Patrick Ahren, Architect. Um, so we're here. For one, two, three, four Monument Street, uh, with additions to both the main house and carriage house, it's, it's two separate, I believe it's two separate applications, if, do I present them all, I can present them all together?
Um, we have them as one application.
Oh, okay, great, well, then I'll, I'll, I'll speak to both structures, um, in the presentation, I'm happy to share the screen, if that's helpful. Uh, bring up the site plan and look at the architecturals if you prefer. Just want to make sure that's gonna share, okay, is that, uh? Is that up for everybody, I'll zoom in a little bit, so.
You're on.
It's a large site plan. So, uh, one, two, three, four Monument Street has two non-conforming pre-existing structures. Um, both of them have non-conformities in the front yard here, uh, as it's a corner lot on, uh, Balls Hill Road. Uh, we'll start with the main house, the proposed addition on the main house is a single story, um, flat roof addition. The current setback on the corner is sixteen feet, um, at the side corner of the house here, it's twenty three, uh, twen- sorry, twenty five point three feet. And the proposed addition, you could see outlined here in the darker, uh, black, uh, is for the, uh, one-story space. The, uh, setbacks to that addition will be thirty three point seven feet and thirty three point one feet to the roof overhang accordingly. Which is less than the, uh, well, more, I, I guess you could say than the twenty five point three, uh, existing, pre-existing side yard setback, so. There, we're, um, we're, we're also, uh, non-conforming, but we're not more, uh, non-conforming than what's currently in place. Um, and therefore, we feel that the proposed addition of the main house is not substantially detrimental. Um, speaking for the carriage house, uh, similar situation with the side yard setback. Uh, or, uh, sorry, front yard setback, we are twenty nine point three feet now. And, uh, the new addition, which actually is a continuation of a, of a one-story element that's there right now. This happens to have a gabled roof on it, so it's, reads as a one and a half story element. Um, the new setback for that will be the same as the existing bump out piece, so if I could just highlight that for you here. There's an existing piece right now. Let me get the pen back out. There's an existing bump out on the side of this structure here, and what we're doing with our addition is continuing that line. And therefore maintaining that setback, but again, we're also, uh, greater than the current non-conforming setback at, uh, twenty nine point three feet. We will be ultimately thirty three point nine feet, um, for that addition as well. Um, I could share the architecturals or photos, um, if that's helpful. Um, this is the. Side yard here, or of the main house, you can see there's an existing blue stone patio there. So, from a, um, lot coverage standpoint, and also from a stormwater management standpoint, we won't really be adding any impervious area on that structure. Um, also, I'd like to just mention that from an FAR standpoint, uh, this is a two point seven acre lot. And so, um, I don't believe there's any issues, uh, regarding FAR. And, um, we've submitted those numbers as part of the application as well. Um, on the carriage house, just some photographs for reference, um. Scroll back up, so here's the existing structure that you see. This is the bump out piece that's currently there that we would be adding to, uh, so that will be in plain with the face here. And be a similar sized addition, uh, to what you see on the side right now. Happy, happy to take any questions or, um, if there's anything I missed, uh, feel free to let me know.
Uh, thank you, um, I do not have any question, do, does the board have any questions? Seeing, seeing none, um. Let me open it for public comment, is there anybody from the public who wants, wishes to speak on this, please raise your hand. Um, with. What tricky to see here. But not seeing any raised hands. I am closing the, uh, the public comment section of this, uh, hearing, um. Board members, uh, any discussion?
I guess I, I guess I do have one question, if I could just hear from the architect, just a little more, you know, you've got a two point seven acre lot. Why does the addition need to be in the setback when there's so much space elsewhere, right?
Well, why don't we share the screen again, I think, if you, if you consider the nature of the house, um. You go back to sharing the screen. So, if you consider the nature of the structure right now, you know, there really, there really isn't a lot of area to add. Otherwise, uh, architecturally, that would be, I think, sympathetic and, and coordinate well with the house. You know, what we're talking about here is an addition on the side. Which infills basically an open space courtyard that's there right now, this is the front of the house. I just give you a sense in, in the photos. Hope we're on the carriage house plan, apologies. So, you know, this is the front of the house that faces the open yard, this is the front of the house that faces the open yard. From a programmatic standpoint, it also makes sense to add where we're adding, uh, based on the interior floor plan layout, so. Uh, I don't think we're intensifying the non-conformity, um, which is why we, um. Are before you for establishing a, a special permit for this addition. On the carriage house.
That, that's helpful, I, you know, I just wanted to have that in the record, that. That thought was there, and I, I do like that. You're taking an existing impervious and, you know, using that same area to, to put the new impervious, so we're not, we're not increasing that.
And I, I, I think the, the fact that it's an infill almost, right, it, it keeps the house, um, at least it appears a more compact, right? You could otherwise stretch it out longer and that, that's not.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want to go per se, so. Um, any other questions? Or discussion from the board? If none, then I think, uh, more than a few, Miss Akos Moore.
Thanks, yeah.
We don't have more meetings to go.
Yeah, I mean, sure, um, did you want to do anything? Come on, Theo, this is your big chance to add some sort of any condition of your stormwater management, anything?
Oh, no, there, there is a stormwater management, I, I think the stormwater management in, in this case, I mean, and, uh, as the presenter just mentioned, it's, it's on an already, uh, impervious area. Um. You know, I, I, yeah. There might be, and there could easily be a new patio being built, right, you take one patio out, then you still have another patio to go, which is not in these building plans, so. Um, I, at least, you know, we, we do want to make sure that we do some stormwater management, uh, that's appropriate for, uh, at least the, uh, the very least the addition, so.
And, um.
That's, that's a condition we, uh, we should just.
Okay.
Panadize here.
Um, okay, and then Robbie, to your point, the finding is that, I mean, it clearly does extend the non-conformity, but it. We're making, we're saying because architecturally, it's appropriate.
Yeah, and it's not getting closer to the setback than the house already is, right?
Well, it doesn't further intensify the existing non-conformity, so.
That's actually, that's actually a good way to, uh, to say that, because I always struggle with that, just, you know, I always struggle with it, but, you know, you. You're not coming closer to the property line, but you're putting more bulk in the setback.
Bulk, yeah, but, but I think that, that's, that's the one that I always struggle with, uh, but.
If you do that, or how do you justify it? Theo, what's your, what is the struggle? To allow it, or?
The, the, the struggle is that, you know, we always say, like, we are not, uh, increasing the non-conformity. It's, it's like, well, we are adding more bulk in a property, uh, within a setback. And that is, that is, I, in my mind, I can see, you can make an argument that is increasing the non-con. And that is, that is, I, in my mind, I can see you can make an argument that is increasing the non-conformity by putting more bulk in it. But we're not, in this case, which, and, and all cases, we're not coming any closer. So we're not intensifying, uh, the non-conforming.
Yeah, and I think staying within the kind of shape of the house as it exists helps mitigate here. And that I think there is some screening along Monument Street, uh, with, with trees and whatnot, so.
Yeah, I'm just putting it in the context of what we did in the last, the last one, because I think this is a harder argument with a seven-thousand square foot house and a two-point-seven.
Yeah, you're right. There's plenty of other space. And that's why I asked the question, you know, why does it have to go here? Uh, but I think there's a good enough answer on that, at least for me.
And, all right. Um, so I will go ahead and move that we grant the permit to Mark and Jody Lofman. Um, the special permit under zoning by law, section seven, one, five, eleven, six, constructed two hundred and sixty-six square foot addition with a front yard setback and a non-conforming carriage house garage and a four hundred and sixty-four square foot addition on non-conforming, excuse me, single-family dwelling at one, two, three, four Monument Street, parcel number one, three, seven, two, subject to standard conditions and subject to what Theo said. You second, Robbie?
I second.
All right, um, all in favor, Ms. Ecosmore?
Hi.
Uh, Ms. Fia?
Hi.
And Chair votes aye as well. Congratulations with, uh, the approval and good luck with construction.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Last item. Last item for tonight. It's the shortest meeting, but it's going to be the biggest project. Thorough Residence LLC for comprehensive permit under, uh, Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty B, paragraphs twenty-two, twenty-three for a two-hundred-and-sixty unit family development, family development, which, uh, is a thirteen-point-oh-eight acre portion of the real property known and numbered as two-seventy-five Forest Ridge Road. This meeting, uh, will be opened, that's what she goes did, and we just, we need to continue this immediately. And we need to be opening this here because we're, I think, on day twenty-nine of the thirty days that are allotted to us to open up after the filing. With filing, with opening today, we have a hundred and eighty days to reach a decision. If there's no extension, um, that in my calculation will put us through Tuesday, July sixteenth, that we will have to make, we'll have to close the public hearing, uh, of this entire project. So I will entertain a motion to, uh, continue this public hearing to February twenty-ninth at seven o'clock at the townhouse in the center of Concord.
So full disclosure, since I'm not voting on this, because I'm not.
No, you, you can, you can, you can vote on this. You will have to vote on this. Um, because Thomas is not here.
Elizabeth's here. Elizabeth is here.
But she's, she in the end will also not voting on this. If, I, I mean, Tom, because Tom will be.
Oh, so one of us, whoever does it is not going to be voting on the main thing anyway. That's fine, just putting it out there.
Right, right. So then, and that's fine. I think we can do that. We are all eligible to vote, so.
Fantastic.
Go ahead.
Um, so I'll move that we continue the hearing until, um, what'd you say, February twenty-nine?
Twenty-ninth at seven o'clock in the townhouse.
Seven o'clock, uh, in the townhouse.
My second.
Um, everybody in favor, Ms. Ecosmore?
Hi.
Ms. Sophia?
Right.
And Chair votes aye as well. So that's closed and, um, meeting minutes, would Kim, were there any meeting minutes? Did I miss him? Did?
Didn't get anything.
Didn't see anything, right? There's nothing on the, uh, excellent. Well, then we, we, they're, they're on the, uh, they're on the agenda, but we can't, we don't have anything on this. So, um, I, I would like to congratulate the board actually for tonight's performance because except for thorough residences, we voted on all the items. We, well, except, you know, the other one, Conquest Housing, that wasn't even here. But we, uh, we did not continue. So that's a good thing. It's a great thing.
Yay, we granted everything. We're all in good moods. We granted everything, right?
Uh, we granted everything, uh, yeah.
Good night before us, I guess.
The, the other thing, by the way, I, I also need to thank you all for, um, being at these, uh, public meetings because we're going to have a few, uh, I mean, we're going to have a few coming up. So, um, you know, it's a, it's at least, at least two meetings a month, uh, for the next several months. So, um, except for you, uh, Elizabeth, you are leaving on the eleventh. So.
All right.
But, um, yeah.
I'll miss you all. I'll miss you all. I can, I can.
You can, you can always dial in, you know, these are hybrid meetings, so you can just dial in after, after you leave. So, um, so what's our next meeting is now, um, just February fourteenth is our next meeting, right? That's, uh, that's Novo. And then, um, is it, no, Feb- February, no, February. February ninth is our, our regular meeting. That's the next one, February ninth. And then, uh, and then we have Novo on, uh, the fourteenth. And then, uh, the twenty-ninth, we have Thoreau, so.
And Elizabeth and I are spending, what, two hours?
No, 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 no. We are only spending an hour. I was very clear that, you know, I, I would need to bill if it's two and a half hours. Um, but no, it's only an hour and I was willing to give up that much time in my day.
Thank you. Thank you for putting minutes on that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I, I, I appreciate that actually. I mean, I, I, we do need to make sure that the architecture is what you all, uh, want it to be or that you at least feel comfortable.
Within, yeah, within what we can. Can you, may I ask a question? Um, so Elizabeth, you are done with this board on February eleventh or March eleventh?
April eleventh.
April eleventh, okay, good. Okay, so then you're voting on Novo. I was just trying to figure.
I'm voting on Novo, yes, I'm voting on it. Bowing out on our second forty B, which.
Yeah, I didn't know if I needed to get up to speed on that.
For me.
Traffic thing, but that's great.
No, um, voting for Novo is scheduled on the eleventh. On Elizabeth's, that's going to be.
Oh, wait, I thought it was April. Am I, am I done, Mark?
I'm sorry, April, 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 April.
Yeah, April. I think we're going to say April. That, that's just the way it is.
If, if, April eleventh, that's going to be your last meeting, right? That's, uh, at, uh, at Kai's, Kai's Road.
It's going to be formal attire, black tie.
Wait, we were thinking wigs.
Wigs, yep. It's going to be period attire, exactly.
Baristers, no, we're going to look official.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I, I can't look like anything more related. No, no, that's not, that we can't do. You, you guys.
I wanted to say, I, I learned a lot tonight. This was a really good, various, you guys were very specific. And since, um, I am an attorney, not a land use attorney, it, this was quite helpful, um, to listen to. So, good job.
Thank you. I, I thought it was interesting academically, actually, so.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, I, I had that same, uh, I saw you swallow, uh, Elizabeth Ecosmore. I, I saw you swallow on the, the last one. Um, it's like, yeah.
I don't know what you're talking about. I thought it was great. I don't know how big your house is, Theo, but I know how big mine is.
Mine's under two thousand.
Is it?
It's impressive.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how you live, Theo.
No kids?
Kids.
They, they take up three thousand square foot.
My kids would be right here. They're literally like at the door trying to get in. Hold me there. Anyway, all right. Well, thank you, everyone.
All right.
Thank you. This was great. So Paul, Tim, thank you so much. Tim, hopefully, this was not, uh, too bad for your first, uh, first ones.
Yep.
Yeah. We'll see you more often. That'd be great. And, uh, and Elizabeth, uh, Elizabeth uses, uh, up north, so it's a good, good reason not to make it tonight, so.
Yeah. All right, so we'll see you guys in early February.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, guys.